Hamlet City Council. Good to see everyone here at this time. We're opening the meeting. Our first item of business is, Reverend Chris Hawks will do our invocation tonight. Chris, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe we all pray together. Heavenly Father, first of all, we just want to thank you that we have the privilege and the honor to come before you and, Lord, I stand in awe that you allow us through your son, Jesus Christ, to approach your throne. Lord, your word tells us and instructs us and even commands us that we should not only support our elected officials, but we are commanded to pray for them and to submit to their authority. So, Lord, tonight I consider it an honor to be obedient to you, to pray for our mayor and each one of our city council members, to our city manager, to our law enforcement here and to the staff. And Father, I thank you for every one of them and I thank you for their service to the community of Hamlet. And, Lord, as we all desire deep in our heart, we want Hamlet to be a, not just a good community and a safe community, we want it to be a great community. And, Lord, we know that you are the one who enables us, gives us the strength to work and to make that happen. So, Lord, I pray for the decisions that are made in this room. I pray for the decisions that will not only be made for the good of our community, but will be made, Lord, to advance your kingdom. And I thank you to live in a community, that I live in a community, that allows the opening of a public meeting with prayer to you, and I'm so thankful for that. May you bless this meeting and we pray this prayer in the name of your son, our precious Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Hawks, thank you. And we can't say enough for the support that Second Baptist gives to the city of Hamlet and also to our employees. And we graciously appreciate that. Counsel, we have before us tonight the agenda. And before we approve this, have some additions. We'll be adding item eleven A, which is a change in the mayor pro temp and a change in the COG representative. Item eleven B will be resignation and presentations for our current mayor pro temp, Mr. Bowie, who is being transferred to Nashville, Tennessee. And then under item eleven C, there will be a vote to replace Mr. Bowie's position on city council. Counsel, are there any other changes or additions that need to be done to the agenda?
No, sir. I'm making a motion to approve the changes.
I have a motion to approve. Got a second, Mr. Stewart? All in favor, say aye. Those likewise. Counsel, you also have before you the minutes from the May fourteenth regular meeting and you should have already had an opportunity to look at this closed session and special work session minutes and the May thirtieth, twenty nineteen, special meeting and closed session minutes. What are your wishes on those?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a second. Any changes or additions, deletions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Those likewise. At this time, we'll move along to item number five, which is comments from attendees. And we have with us tonight Mayor Antonio Blue from Dobbin Heights, who has some business he wishes to present. Mayor Blue, come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel, attendees and city manager and attorney and clerk, Madam Clerk. Bishop Wooton came before the city council last month, I think, to talk about the tapping fees for tapping in the sewer. In two thousand and eight, Dobbin Heights, we spent one point two million dollars to run sewer. And Cheney McManus was one of the streets that it was ran on. And he owns a house on the corner of Cheney and Bethel. And at the time, we paid five hundred dollars per house to tap in. And to my understanding, that the connection fee now is a thousand dollars. If I'm correct, am I correct? And so, and we paid to have it tapped in. I paid for the sewer and run the line and everything. And I don't think it's fair that he pays a thousand dollars. I think he probably should be able to pay five hundred. You know, that's, that's just what I think now. It doesn't make me right, but that's what I think he should pay. Five hundred like everybody else paid because we paid to run the line and everything else. You all paid to run the line down Earl Franklin. And I know that everybody that taps in on Earl Franklin, I don't know what they pay, but I know they have to pay whatever it is. And when, when that line was ran, if you did not tie in after a certain time and you had a house there, you got bill for sewer, whether you had tapped in or not on Earl Franklin, but not on the other streets. So, I have the, a copy of the paperwork where we, we did pay for the sewer line. I guess they said that someone asked that we produced paperwork that we did pay for the line and we did. We, we got a grant, Triangle paving and grading. They ran the line. So, it is my wish, or that I ask you all, that you all would consider that they, he'd be allowed to pay the five hundred dollars. Bishop, Bishop, let me, let me, let me, let me talk, Bishop, please. Anyway, I think that he should have to pay every, we paid five hundred dollars for everybody else. Here's, here's the document.
I'll take it, thank you.
There's the document. We, we paid for those people that hooked up and if you see on there, Mr. Manager, there are ten houses and we paid five thousand dollars for those ten houses to be hooked up. We paid five hundred dollars per house, for every house that was hooked up during that hookup.
Mayor Blue, why was that one not hooked on at the time?
At the time, what happened is, we, we got a grant. We later got a, we got another grant to, to connect the houses, some more houses. And we lost that grant. So therefore, there were some other houses that were not hooked up.
Oh, so you only had enough for the ten, is that correct?
No, those ten and some more was included in. If there was vacant houses, you know, when they put the tap in, we didn't have, they didn't pay any money.
That rate to hook on right now, that's the same anywhere, whether it's in Hamlet or Dobbin Heights or where it is, right? Everybody pays the same. Also, everybody in Hamlet that's not hooked to the sewer still pays a sewer fee. So you're not getting, you're not getting charged anything anybody else, even the city of Hamlet's charged. Am I correct?
That's correct. Anybody that did not tap in at the time, if they wanted to come back and tap in at a later time, it would be a thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
There's nothing against the bishop. It's, that's what we charge in city, Dobbin Heights, wherever it is.
But I guess, I guess my question in this whole process is that when the sewer line ran through and we originally went through this process years ago and the line came through, Dobbin Heights benefited nothing from that sewer line, other than that sewer line needed to get through to get the
Yeah, that was built on grant money, wasn't it?
It was, no, no, I'm talking about the original line that came through originally was Earl Franklin. It needed to come through Dobbin Heights to get the Plastech at the time.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that's why, that's how this, all of this stuff originally came about was that my predecessor, when, when the grant, when this stuff originally came through, Plastech was being built, they needed sewer. And it wasn't Plastech, it was O'Neil, O'Neil's doors. They needed sewer. So it was either run it through Dobbin Heights or run it down by Grant Road. And Dobbin Heights was the route that it came through. And I don't know, I wasn't the mayor, I wasn't here, and I wasn't at the table to do it and negotiate.
Well, who actually paid for that line?
Uh, now, I don't know who paid for that.
Did the county pay for it?
I don't know, I don't know who paid for it.
The city of Hamlet, I don't believe.
No, the city of Hamlet, I don't think paid for it either. I don't know who paid for the line originally.
It's been years, many years ago.
It's been years ago. But when we got involved and started adding on, we paid. You know, we, we paid. And what, all I'm asking is, is this, this is what I'm asking, that allow him to pay the rate that they paid, which was five hundred dollars, to tie in because it wasn't mandated. See, if, when Earl Franklin came through, it was mandated that you tie in. You didn't have a choice.
Right.
When, when we did it and we went back, when we went back and got ready to tie in some more houses, we had to get permission from you all to make sure that sewer had the capacity.
That's right.
And you all did not have the capacity at the time. So, we couldn't even get another grant to be able to tie in and went in. So, with the tap already being there and now those people can tie in if they so choose to tie in, because that was the thing. They didn't have to tie in because they had sewer septic systems that worked. Now, if they have a failing septic system, they need to tie in. So, you know.
I think the, the biggest thing I have an issue with is if we do it for one, we're opening up a gateway for everyone else.
We've got to do it for people in
And then that's also gonna affect tap fees for, which I have written down because I had a call the other day from a neighbor two doors down with a concern of the tap fees for sprinkler system being as high as they were. So if we, if we start doing that, we're going to lose money tremendously.
And I understand that piece, but, but I guess the other part of it is the tap is already there. He's gonna have to pay to have somebody to run that line from his house to that tap that's already been paid for to be put in the ground.
Well, that, we have the same thing in Hamlet. We put the taps in. We put them, we put them there. They're available to everybody that lives in the city limits of Hamlet. But when they hook, when they hook to that tap, they have to pay a thousand dollars.
So, you're telling me that, and, and I don't know, because I don't live in the city limits of Hamlet. So you're telling me, people in the city limits of Hamlet, you still have people within the city limits
We sure do.
that do not have sewer.
And they're paying a sewer, they're paying a sewer rate, basic sewer rate.
And to get hooked up, they would have to pay.
Have to pay the thousand dollars.
So, so they're paying the sewer, they're paying the water sewer rate already?
Yes, sir.
And then they've gotta pay to hook up, even though they are not using sewer.
Just like you were talking about on Earl Franklin. They, they wouldn't have to have, have had to hook up, but they would have had to have paid the rate. You can't make them hook up, but at whatever point you set the time, they would have to start paying the rate.
Yeah, they would have had to start paying the rate after a certain amount of time.
But I have one question specific about the bishop's house.
Okay.
Okay. That paper that you just give us, was his house one of the houses that five hundred dollars was paid for?
Was, no.
His house was not one that was, okay.
No, no.
Okay.
See, because when they, like I said, when they ran it, what I, what I did that I thought was logical was, if I ran by your house, whether I ran on the back side or the front side, we put a tap in the yard. It just made sense.
Which is what we do.
It just made sense. Prior to me, that wasn't what they were doing. They were putting a tap only if your address faced the street that it ran down.
Right.
So, his, his house is on, his address is Bethel. The tap's on Cheney. So when we ran by his house, I made sure, not only his house, several other houses, I made sure that the tap was in their yard.
But they chose not to hook up.
Well, they, we had a grant to hook them up. We lost the grant.
When did the rate go up?
July one, twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
It went up when?
July one, twenty eighteen, almost a year ago.
I, I mean, I don't know when it went up, because I didn't even know when it went up until he told me. So I, I had no idea that the rate had went up.
Right, July first was when the increased water rates went into effect. That's when the, the new tap fees went into effect.
What's the cost of installing a tap, a tap?
It would have been the cost, it would vary from the time that it was installed. What do you think?
Yeah, they were put in at the time.
No, I think his question is, is what would it cost?
What would it cost?
To go out there today?
To put, put a tap in.
A thousand dollars comes close to recouping our cost. We didn't pick that number arbitrarily. That's the amount of
To put it, to put a tap in.
To put a tap in.
But, but you don't have to do anything at his house. That's what I'm saying. You don't have to do anything at his house, other than he has to pay a plumber to run from his house to that tap that's already there.
Right.
The tap's there already.
Oh, I get what you're saying, but what the city manager was saying, when we put the taps in.
When you, when you all put them in.
We put them all in.
Right.
So you don't go back out there and, and dig it up. And, and that's basically the cost of the tap.
That we incurred at the time. Yes, that we incurred at the time.
Well, the tap is there, but meter and all that's not there, right?
Right. The policy of the city is that when we run a sewer line in, and Billy, please correct me if I'm wrong, when we run a sewer line in, the residents have the option to tap on. If they do not, and they decide they want to tap on at a later date, they then pay the tap fee, which is now a thousand dollars in order to tap on. It's no different than someone building a house on, on Terry Street or Madison Avenue and then wanting to tap onto a sewer line. It may be there, the tap may be there, but the cost of the city originally occurred at that time has never been recouped.
Yeah, because I think you're, you're saying that, okay, yeah, plumbers gotta come in and do all that, but the city has to come in and run a line from the tap to the meter.
There's no meter on sewer.
No.
Yeah, no meter on sewer. Yeah. But do we have to do anything on our side of the tap?
No.
No, there's nothing else that has to be done. It was done when that line was originally put there and the tap was installed.
There's no tap install.
The tap's there.
That, that's my point.
Was it done with their grant money?
It was done with our, our grant money. See, it was done with our grant money.
Can I ask, Mr. Morpheus?
I can't verify that.
Is, is there a difference in what you're hearing, what he's saying, than another situation in which someone requests to get hooked up, that we put a tap there? I mean, the tap was there with their grant money, would this set a precedent? In your opinion?
Because the tap's already there.
And you know too, Mayor Blue, this, this is a slippery slope.
Right.
I mean, this is something that, you know.
Yeah, I've got a neighbor, I got a neighbor right now that is not on, he wants to get on and he, I told him, I said, you're gonna have to pay, yes, I said, you're gonna have to pay the thousand dollars.
I mean, that, that's, I guess my biggest question is, is we're charging a tap fee, but a tap is already there.
But we paid for it.
We paid for it.
You, you paid for it in Hamlet.
We didn't, we didn't pay.
But, but we paid for it.
But that's what I just asked the attorney. If there, do you see a distinction in this situation?
I think counsel could make a distinction. I think there's some basis for that, if you wanted. Because what I'm hearing is
We didn't pay for the sewer line or the tap.
What I'm hearing is, is you all didn't pay for the sewer line and the concern is, or the taps that went in. Well, but, but we, I'm also hearing that we don't have good documentation on that. So we don't know that for sure.
We could find out, though.
One minute. It's, it's right here. If you turn to the second page, here you go. If you turn to the second page, okay, of that document, it shows the breakout. We paid for it. This, this, this was our funds. These were our funds that paid for it, not your funds.
No, we all don't have a copy of this, so I'm just gonna ask. And I'm, I got Bill beside me. But is the address, yeah, thank you, is the address that he lives at on this second page?
No, the address is the third page, I guess.
If you look at the third page
Okay.
and you see the layout, you'll see Cheney McManus. It's the third, it's the third page. You'll see Cheney McManus.
It's on the last page.
It's on the last page.
Yep.
And you, you see, you see Bethel Church Road? And you, when you see Cheney McManus at that intersection, that's where it's at.
Can, can we have between the city manager and our attorney, look at everything? Because I, I think there's pretty much counsel is, I'm hearing, what I think I hear, but I believe if it is factual that you guys pay for this tap, you guys had the funds to pay for the line and everything, maybe something, and if the city attorney agrees that, you know, maybe this could be waived on the circumstances that we have no money into it at all.
Right.
But I think it's something that, I'm stepping down tonight, so I, this is gonna be something they're gonna have to deal with. I'm just, my input on it. It maybe have to be worked out, confirmed that it was not paid for by us.
Right. I don't, I don't have a problem with, if we can have a, I'd like to have another, I, this is what I wanted, was another meeting and actually not to come to the council meeting and talk to you all about this and sit down with the documentation to support what I'm saying. So, I don't have a problem with it.
It would seem to me that if the tap is already there, then what's the problem for a plumber to go out and hook on to the tap?
There, there's not a problem.
We're not putting a tap in. It's already there.
Well, what he's saying is, is we gotta make sure that when we, when the tap was installed and the lines and all, that the city didn't put it there. And if they didn't, and they did under their grant money, then we should be able to let them do it with no issues, no charges.
The gentleman beside the mayor, he's in the same situation. The tap's there, he wouldn't have to do anything else, but he would still have to pay the
Pay the tap fee, because we put that tap, we put that tap.
I guess the difference with, with the, with the mayor's neighbor is
The city put it there.
The city paid for that.
But in this situation, it appears that
It's already been paid for.
We, we paid for it. Triangle grade, grading and paving did, they did the work. We paid for it. You all, you all didn't pay, pay anything for it. You all reaped the benefit when we paid. My water bill this month, I think, was eighty-eight dollars. I'm the only person in my house. I pay eighty-eight dollars for water bill and sewer, okay? It was ninety dollars last month, nobody but me. I wash at nighttime, you know, and I'm not home during the daytime. I don't have a leak, there's nothing wrong. And, and I don't come down here and complain at all about my water bill, okay? I, I don't have a problem with it. But I feel like right now, with, with, with this, we paid for this. So if we paid for it, you all don't have anything, any other than you all reap the financial benefits of when the water bill is paid and, and he's gonna pay probably eighty, ninety dollars, somebody gonna pay eighty, ninety dollar water bill every month.
First off, we're not, we're not reek, reeking any benefit off of it. We're already bumping up against it.
Right. But you understand what I'm saying, though, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Right. And Mayor Blue, I, I just have a point of clarification, just for the purpose of making sure that I understand this correctly. And I understand that your argument, if Dobbin Heights did indeed receive this grant and they put in the line, that the people that are on that line should not have to pay a tap fee. I, I understand that's what you're saying. But my question would be, back in two thousand nine, the town of Dobbin Heights paid us five thousand dollars, which would have been
Five hundred dollars each.
Five hundred dollars each. Why did you pay us then? Why, why was this paid?
That wasn't the question. It wasn't a question about
My understanding was
Questions about the amount. We let them tap on it five hundred each after they
But we charged them then, but we're not going to charge them now?
We're not saying not charging.
I think that's, yeah, why did you
That's my question. Why did you pay them?
I didn't, I didn't, I did not say, do not charge. I, I never said, do not charge. I said, I said, he should be allowed to pay five hundred dollars. That's what I said. I'm not, I'm not saying, no, no, don't, don't get that twisted. I'm not saying he, he should not pay, because we did pay. We paid five hundred dollars.
Bishop, if you, if you're gonna speak and, then first of all, you need to be at the mic, but second of all, you're gonna be the same as any other citizen in, in the city of Hamlet that pays taxes here, okay? So, I, I under, I understand what you're saying, but we're spinning our wheels right now until we find out the facts on the tap and the line and who paid what, when and where, so that we can get it resolved for you, okay?
Come up to the microphone.
I appreciate y'all listening, uh, and I wanted for the mayor and counsel. But when I was here last month on this discussion, man and councilwoman Davis, I was told that if we brought the documents showing that Dobbin Heights paid for, and this, this was, this is what y'all told me last time I was here, that if we brought documentation that the town of Hamlet didn't have no money, didn't have nothing to do with this grant and the houses being hooked up, then, uh, we shouldn't have to pay anything.
I don't recall that, Bishop. We can look it up.
It was in the media.
Well, it may have been, but it may have been, but your paperwork shows that others paid five hundred dollars. And if they did, then you're gonna have to pay five hundred dollars too.
Well, like I said, they, they might have paid it, but they didn't know they had to pay it. They paid it because they, then they was ignorant to the fact that, uh, the town of Hamlet didn't have, they was under the impression that Hamlet paid for the taps to be hooked up. That's why come they paid the money. But if they had to know that they didn't, that Hamlet had nothing to do with all those tap-ins, then they, they need to, their money need to go back to them. They need to be refunded for their money that they spent, because Hamlet had nothing to do with
Well, Hamlet had apparently something to do with it, because there's a reason you'd pay five hundred dollars to the city of Hamlet.
But they need to
Unless the city of Hamlet provided the taps.
Mayor, his money, he need to be signified about his, why his water bill paying ninety dollars for water bill. It, it's just not right.
You got drinkable water? I pay the same thing.
Well, I don't, I don't pay that much money. And if I was, I would come and find out why I was paying that much.
You'd probably be told the same thing everybody else has been told, is that's the cost of the water bill. Because we have cost incurred.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can I just make a suggestion that you and Mayor Blue and the city manager get together, get the proper documentation, bring it back at the next council meeting and let us make a decision based off the facts and not, nobody knows who, who did anything other than I, I hear what you're saying.
I don't, I don't, Councilwoman McQueen, I don't have a problem with that. If the city manager and the mayor will, uh, give me a call, will arrange a meeting and we'll sit down, we'll sit down at the table and I think that we can come to a applicable agreement. I think we can.
It could be a situation where this is not the same as stuff in our town.
I understand.
But, but we just don't know.
I understand.
And we can sit here and go around and around for the next hour or two. And, and it's not gonna do anything but make everybody upset.
Right. I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Probably be the best. That's just my opinion now.
Mr. Mr. Blended, if you, if you'll call me and let me know what schedule to meet.
Mayor Blue, it'll probably be sometime after the first of July.
Not a problem. Not a problem, Mr. Mayor.
Manager's back full time.
It's not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, hey, thank you very much and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bishop.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anyone else tonight that's got any comments that are not on the agenda? That they wish to bring to us? Okay. Not, well, closed comments from attendees. Counsel, you have before you tonight, item number six is truck and trailer parking. We have had the attorney working on this for some time and tweaking it and so we have it before us tonight to go over it and make a decision. So it's open for discussion at this time. Who would like to comment on this? The manager or the attorney?
Well, listen, I'll start briefly and then please jump in, Mr. Morpheus. As the mayor said, we've talked about this for some time. It originated several months ago when it was brought to our attention that our tractor, tractor trailer ordinance was vague, that the ordinance said that tractor trailers could come down seventy-four, thirty-eight and one seventy-seven and other streets, just if they were going to and from a final destination. I think that the question that we discussed at length some months ago is, what is a final destination? Is parking at home overnight a, a final destination? So the city attorney has done a good job with coming up with a more clear ordinance. I'll be glad to defer to him to describe it in more detail and I'm sure we can answer any questions that you all may have or any concerns of the public here tonight.
I don't really have anything to add unless you all have specific questions about it.
Counsel, any comments?
No, the only thing I have was I checked with the attorney to be sure that when we adopt something, that we can stipulate that we're gonna provide proper timeframe of when to put it in place.
And did y'all and the audience want to make any comments on this tonight? Or have you even seen a copy of it? You haven't. Have you got a copy you can put up on the board up there and just let them go over it?
John?
Sorry, I, I just asked a question.
Okay, a copy.
Sure.
And it would probably be beneficial if we can just walk through it and talk through it so that everyone understands that we're on, on the same page. Mr. Morpheus, you wanna, you wanna speak directly?
Absolutely. So, first thing we did is we clarified definition of commercial motor vehicle. Our current ordinance talks about trucks and Our current ordinance talks about trucks in some places, and other places it talks about trucks and trailers. And so we just took the definition that's in the N C D O T statutes, um, commercial motor vehicle. Uh, and then if you scroll down a little bit more, um, the, the new ordinance says a few things. It takes existing ordinance that already prohibits parking, sorry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, it takes existing ordinance that already prohibits parking of a truck, um, or any trailer on public streets for any reason except for business related things, you know, loading, unloading, if you've got a lawnmower service or something. Um, this wouldn't be included, and it just clarifies we're talking about commercial vehicles, so that's a minor change. Um, more significant change, this, if adopted, would amend the zoning ordinance as well. And it would, this is section four, uh, on the ordinance here. Um, it prohibits the parking of commercial motor vehicles on residential lots. So that's in your yard, that's on your driveway. There are some exceptions, and those are significant. One is if it's parked while being loaded or unloaded. So you're loading the moving van, you're loading the, you know, furniture van or whatever, that's fine. Uh, temporary parking of a vehicle used by persons working at the residence, again, you're an electrician, got a lawn service, that's all fine. Um, temporary parking of a vehicle driven to and from work, provided that such vehicle does not meet the definition of commo, commercial motor vehicle. So what we didn't wanna get was, you know, if, if you're, um, an electrician and you park your van at home at night or something like that, then that's excluded. What this is really trying to focus on are bigger trucks to get parked. Someone parks, you know, their eighteen wheeler with or without a trailer on the property, it would prohibit that. And, and that's really the main focus of the ordinance.
All right, sir, comments?
Yes, sir, I have several.
Sure.
Um, number one. Understanding that.
Sir, what's your name? I'm sorry.
Michael Willman, I live in Hamlet, I'm one of the truck drivers involved in this. But looking at the ordinance as way it's written, um, a vehicle from being parked while being loaded or unloaded, we don't do that. Used by a person working at a residence, for an example, electrician, carpenter van or whatever. Truck, the trailer weighs thirty-five thousand pounds, gentlemen, empty. Empty. You put twenty-six tons of sand on it, twenty-six tons, fifty-two thousand pounds. So you're right at eighty thousand pounds when you're loaded. Okay, so we have a weight variance there, loaded or empty. The only thing is, it doesn't, I mean, I can go either way with it myself. I can park at Shell Station in Hamlet by City Lake, drive my car back and forth, if I have to do that. But the point is, all this started, myself been doing this eight years, no problem. Not a word from anybody. And all this starts because now we're tearing up the streets. And there's other ordinances that are being violated as well, and none of them have been addressed. Not a one. We're the only ones that are being addressed on any ordinance that I know of.
Well, that's, that's not necessarily true. I understand what you're saying. We have an entire code enforcement department here at the city. When we receive complaints, our code enforcement officer goes out to see if there's a problem, and there's numerous ordinances that are, that are violated, uh, regularly that we send notices to, and most of the time the nuisance is abated or the problem is taken care of. If you all have a, a complaint or concern, we operate on a complaint only basis. We're not riding around looking for problems. It isn't until a citizen or someone brings an issue to our attention that we investigate it. Uh, like I said, complaint only. So if there's an issue of something you see that we're not doing correctly, or an ordinance that's being violated, you're more than welcome to come see me, to come see Miss Kim Lyerly, our code enforcement officer, and we're always glad to look into any problem or issue that we have accordingly. But regularly and routinely, we send out violation notices all over the city, regularly.
So we're not the only ones receiving these notices?
No, no, we have a code en, we have a code enforcement violation letter that's sent specifically giving a copy of the ordinance or detailing what the ordinance says, and then, uh, giving specific notice and steps in order to be able to alleviate it. You are not the only one that receives, uh, receives these notices, no, sir.
Okay, cause I know of at least three others within the city limits of Hamlet that have not received a notice.
Well, and.
Take care of that.
We can certainly take care of that. I'll be glad to take care of that tomorrow if you wanna give their names and addresses.
Here's the whole point, I'm not trying to pick an argument, but here's the whole point. In the first meeting, it was all agreed that what's, what was fair for one is fair for all.
Correct.
The law's for everyone.
Correct.
Okay, so I can, I can take it. But if I, but if I had to take it as a driver, taking my truck home, then it should be fair for everyone that had to do the same thing I do.
You're exactly right. And if this ordinance passes as is written, anyone that is in violation of this ordinance will be subject to fines that are, uh, under the city of Hamlet's control if they do not, uh, if they do not comply with the ordinance as written. I assure you, this was not meant to target you directly, and I greatly apologize. I know this has been very difficult for you all. I really appreciate you coming to voice your input and concern to the council, but it, it was not directed specifically at you. I'm, I'm sorry if you feel that way, but this is a problem throughout the city. Council, council members and I have ridden around and seen multiple, uh, violations of the ordinance. I mean, across Pinecroft, other areas of, of the city, and this ordinance will take effect for everyone equally without respect to persons or people. I mean, this was not intended directly for you, I assure you.
Well, I, I hope you, and I, I'm, thank you for understanding the way I feel, you know, walking out, going in the truck one morning and finding a copy of the ordinance on the driver's door with no knock on the door or anything else, so. But the thing is, I mean, I appreciate your time and looking into this, and, uh, we need to work, there's other ordinances we all need to work on, and we need to work on them together.
We know that, we've been working on it for a long, whereas some of our ordinances are way out, and we're, we're, Mister Morpheus is working on them as we can get to them.
All right, so.
Thank you.
What's our timeline?
All right, so, yeah, it's, um.
And actually, I, I need to offer one small correction on that, cause y'all had asked about delayed effective dates.
Yeah.
And I'd spoken with Gail about this last week, and she and I just miscommunicated. Um, she asked me specifically, uh, does this need to go to, um, planning and zoning? And the answer is, part of this amends the code of ordinances, which technically doesn't need a public hearing, but this section four amends the zoning ordinance, and so we actually do need to run it like another zoning text amendment.
Yep.
And the reason I, and I apologize for interrupting you, but that's gonna kick out the date when y'all could adopt it.
Yep. Well, actually, that'd put it, it'd go to them, their next meeting, which is scheduled.
But it don't, until this goes through zoning.
That's correct.
August or September.
That'd be perfect.
Yep.
Cause we were gonna try to give to August anyway, and being this is gonna have to go to planning and zoning, by the time it comes back to the council, then.
So we're looking at like September?
Looks like it.
August or September.
Okay.
And I wanna apologize, cause that was, that was a miscommunication on my part with city staff.
That helps them, cause we wanna make sure they have time to talk to employers and, and anything you need to do to set up and plan what you need to do with your truck.
Right.
We will take this to the planning and zoning board in July. At that time, their recommendation will come back to the city council, and at that time, we can discuss a date that it would become effective, if that's agreeable to say.
And council, if they choose to adopt it, when it comes back to them, and they think there's a good reason, they can delay when it becomes effective. So, I think August, September, council may take some more information from citizens about it.
All right, so we can just come back to the council meeting in August or September and get that, get that then, correct?
I would come back in August.
But they could actually go to the planning and zoning board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and that's one other thing I would say. I mean, I've written a very good ordinance, but I'm not a truck driver, and if there are things that need to be tweaked or issues, um, aside from obviously you can't park on your property anymore, please give that to planning and zoning, cause they're gonna provide that then to the city council for consideration.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I believe we've got another lady back there wants to make a comment. Come up and state your name.
My name is Kelly Bryant. Um, I sorta, no, I don't, I don't understand why it was written the way it was written. Um, I brought this up a month ago, so ago, when we were, about two months ago, when I mentioned about how some companies require the truck to be in a line of supervision. And my son, he either has to park at our home when he's on his truck, or one of us is driving three and a half hours um, one way out to his terminal in Greer, South Carolina. That's a long ways. And if I'm in school and I have to go pick him up, that's seven hours out of my day. So, it is convenient, like yesterday he was home, if he is in his truck, that he can stop by the house or be at the house for a few days on his home time, have his truck there, and when he's getting ready to pull out, he's pulling out for wherever he's going to. Having to find someplace else, an hour someplace away, that's, that's, that's a little much. And I know y'all don't understand it, cause you don't drive a truck. If you're a truck driver, a lot of these trucks, especially like he, uh, he drives for Swift and some of these bigger companies, you have to have that truck in line of supervision. You just can't have it just somewhere else. You, it's either at their terminal or it's at your house.
Uh, we understand, we understand, but it's just if you live in a bigger city that doesn't allow it, then you're not gonna be able to do it there either.
We're in Hamlet.
Um, we can't allow it.
We're in Hamlet.
Still.
We're not in Charlotte. I, if, if, if we were in Charlotte, okay, maybe. But we're in Hamlet.
And we have citizens in Hamlet that are complaining about it.
Which is very interesting, um, considering that I've lived there for eight years and nobody's complained.
Yep.
Uh, people, uh, people come by, if people have complaints, people come by your house, they'll say stuff.
Mm-hmm. They do.
So, my, our truck is not in, is not in the street, it's in our yard. Mister Weldon, Mister Fulmer, their trucks are in their yards, they're not in the street, they're not on the street.
Well, I do, again, and I, you know, I, I hate to keep going back over this, but our city streets are not built to standard to carry an eighty thousand pound truck. They, the streets are a whole lot different from state roads, and we just, you know, over a period of time, it just wears these little streets out. We don't have the thickness of asphalt, uh, it's just not made for it.
I could, I could really understand if they, if they were coming every day, like you see UPS or FedEx or some of them, if they were every day. My son is home maybe once every two to three months.
Yes, ma'am.
Once to two to three months, he comes on our street, the car, the truck is sitting there for three or four, maybe five days sometimes when he's home, and he goes back out, and I don't see him for two or three months.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, so this is gonna be tabled until it goes through the zoning, correct? Okay. Oh, yes, sir.
Sir, I pay taxes here. You, Louis Fulmer, Louis Fulmer, he's on four two Walnut Street. Talk about your city trucks. They don't weigh, but they do. I cut trees down in my yard, my yard. Limbs this big, they come back out, make me cut them, eight foot long, where they can load. My truck, like he said, weighs eighty thousand pounds if it's loaded. But when I come home, once over sixty days, or since this started, I've been home twice. Two nights for four months. Two nights for four months. My truck weighs thirty-two thousand pound empty. When I come home, it's empty. You talk about your streets, two thousand and eight when I moved in there, might as well have said it wasn't those streets the way the streets was. These people back here, we don't turn nothing up. And when you got a six wheel truck and you're pulling a trailer behind you, a city truck, and it's fully loaded with wood and shingles or whatever, whatever you got on the street you pick up, weighs as much as our, my truck, more. But y'all complain when people's been here and paid taxes for twenty-five, thirty years. D O T regulation, federal regulation says unless and we cross a bridge, low tonnage bridge, it say road. It's a low tonnage bridge, we could go home and stay, just like my company, just like my company. I can't afford to, to go to Oklahoma, get off, pay five, six, seven hundred dollars, fly home, stay towards three days, five, six, seven hundred dollars and fly back. Mayor, can you? Can you, can you do that? But when I'm at home, I got to have that truck in eyesight. I can't park down at the truck stop, they're for me. I can't park it over that city lake, for it. Now, can I afford, or can you pay it for me?
No, mine's going to Tennessee, so I'm moving there.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying I can't afford it. Now, otherwise, I can stay there and be good citizen. Well, I got to find somewhere to go, cause that's the way I make my living. This fellow right here, her son. We don't turn nothing up. You know what I done the last time I was here? I walked the street. I walked the street to see what was, was turning up. Didn't see a thing. Only thing I seen was a little rubble. That's all. I don't want to hire no lawyer, fight this. I want to be just a good citizen. And go on about my business. When I leave Friday or Saturday or Sunday, I'm home for six days. When I leave, you won't see me probably for two more months. Unless and my wife comes up here and say, well, we're having trouble, well, you got to come home, then I have to come home. But I don't want to do all of this, and I don't want to be no bad, bad person. But if I have to, I'm gonna hire a lawyer, if I have to. And I won't hire a lawyer out of Hamlet. If I spend money, I'm gonna get a bid on it. But I don't want to do that. I don't want to hurt, I don't want to have nobody ill with me or me be ill with y'all. I just want to be a citizen. That's all we want to be. This man works and pay his bills and fight for his family. This lady's son do the same thing and I do the same thing. That's all we want. We don't want nobody to be mad with us. Because the fellow moved inside of me, Mister Sturts' house, and when my battery gets low, and this time I cut it slime off where it wouldn't come on, to be a citizen, not to bother that man. I, I planted Mister Sturts' garden ever since two thousand and eight, never had a problem until that fellow moved inside of me. I knew exactly what he did. Till that fellow moved inside of me, in Mister Raymond's house, he's the ones complaining, he's renting. We're buying. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
I think more things. If it was about the ambiguity of the law, why don't we just adjust it to where it was written that those who are parking at their homes could park at home versus change, reordering the whole ordinance just to, to cover commercial vehicles? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Could you say it again? I wanna make sure I, I got it.
If, if, if it's, if, from you all's point of view, it was about the ambiguity of the law, the ordinance, was clearing that up, why don't you just, when you were writing the, rewriting the ordinance, just write what was written, but if you, and include if you are going to your house?
Okay, I got it this time, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, there was some clearing up of existing language, cause there are different terms, we're trying to make it more consistent, but the, the request I received was to prepare a draft ordinance the council could consider that would prohibit the parking of trucks and other very large commercial vehicles on people's property. So that's really the main focus of the ordinance, and then there's some clarifying in there, but that, that's what we're trying to get at.
Okay. Okay. So, I have a neighbor behind me, he has a rig that he's had on his property for, I know, at least five years. So now he has to find a place to park it. So now he has to find a place to park it. Yes, sir. Yes.
That would be correct. If this ordinance passed as is, yes ma'am, that would be correct. They would not be allowed to be in residential neighborhoods.
Okay, because to me, if it's, if we're trying to clear up the vagueness and we're trying to address this issue, it would have been, I would have thought it would have been easier just to include allowing the truckers to park at home. But now that I see that it's really about keeping commercial vehicles out of pro, on property, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Joanne, did you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Um, one of the complaint-
State your name for the-
Joanne Martin Willman. I'm at four or two Locust Street. The first meeting that we attended, um, the comment was made that property was being damaged and I made the comment about four-wheelers. Two weeks ago. And I think Hamlet Police Department is still investigating, um, cars started getting broke into on Rice Street, next street over. We tried to call Hamlet Police Department because he left out going to work and seeing three kids out walking at two-thirty in the morning. Why is seventeen, eighteen-year-olds out walking in a neighborhood that they don't look like they belong? Then the other night, or Wednesday night, the four-wheeler that I was talking about was outriding around, but when I tried to call Hamlet Police Department, I couldn't call them.
It goes to nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one.
It goes to nine-one-one.
That's right.
But I'm sorry, nine-one-one's emergency and-
No. Nine-one-one for any police-
No, they will take, they will take your calls on that. But, here's the other thing.
Because to me, nine-one-one is for-
But think about this, here's two issues, okay? The first issue is, is there is nothing that forbids seventeen, eighteen-year-olds or whatever age from being out walking on the street at night?
Right, I understand that, but-
Police officers will check them. But, the second thing is, and you know it, uh, but it's practically impossible to catch four-wheelers.
Yes.
Or the dirt bikes, either one, but they try to collect information. I will tell you that I had a conversation with police chief just the other day, and these gentlemen do have some leads on the break-ins.
Okay.
So, they're working on it.
Well, you know, like I said, I know it was going on at Rice Street, they were close to Rice.
But be sure you call when you have stuff going on, that's the biggest thing.
Well, we didn't know, yeah, to me, nine-one-one is-
When they merged, yeah, we merged and did away with all dispatchers locally, and they're all at E-nine-one-one now.
Okay.
So they talk, take all calls.
Because to me, I, I took EMTB and ran with Paramount World, and, you know, that was one of the things they always, like a stump to-
Yeah, because the whole four-wheeler deal, you're not gonna have an officer out there chasing a four-wheeler, because they're gonna kill themselves or somebody else trying to catch a four-wheeler. But they will, they do, you know.
Well, like I said, the four-wheelers have been known to tear up yards, because they tore up the lot beside it, especially when it snows.
But I know the, the properties I discussed that were tore up, that was not a four-wheeler. I physically, and, and he went with me, the, the road between Dogwood Lane and Walnut. If you go up that street about midways on the corner, there's a property owner that put stakes in their yard because a driver was taking a right turn and was going through the entire corner part of the property. And I think the poles may still be there. And it's going right down to the street where the power line goes over, and there's a truck parked on the power line.
I know which house you're talking about, that's the gentleman that has the dogs that everybody is scared to walk by the house anymore.
And then the other one is the-
Because they will try to come over the fence at you.
The other one is the, um, in the curve past, uh, Hamlet Middle School, um, there was a truck parking on the side of the road there that caused deep ruts, and the third spot is, if you're going to the bus parking section of Hamlet, uh, Middle School, there's a truck parked on the side of the road there who is completely torn up the side of the road.
I understand what you're saying, but like I said, the reason I was approaching this, because I was told that if I seen the four-wheelers, to call Hamlet and let them know that they were out.
That's right, that's right.
And then we tried, you know, the break-ins and the vehicles were going on, we seen the three or four kids out. That time of night, we didn't know if they might have been connected or if they were just going to somebody's house. But we were trying to let the police department know that something unusual was going on. But I didn't know that y'all-
And please, please continue to do that.
Okay, well, like I said, I used to work with rescue squad and fire department, you know.
First female firefighter at East Rockingham.
Who?
You. If it wasn't for your dad, there wouldn't be a fire department over there right now, so thank you. Thank you, Joanne. Thank y'all. All right, uh, council, no further comments on that, we'll move along to new business. Uh, first item of new business is a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget ordinance, uh, manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, this is prepared in accordance with North Carolina general statute, it lays out the money that has been allocated in the manager and staff recommended budget from May in my budget message. Standard from what we've done in years past, no major changes other than the, the totals. So I would ask for council to make a mo, a motion to approve this budget ordinance.
Okay, we're in a public hearing at this time, if there's anyone in here tonight who wishes to make comments about the, uh, city budget for the coming year, we certainly would like to hear. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and I will ask for an adoption of the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion. Have a second, Maurice. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Thank you. Counsel, you have before you item number nine tonight, uh, approval of tax releases, and, uh, what are your wishes on that?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Mister Bowie, second from Mister Stewart. Any further discussion on tax releases? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise, thank you. Okay, next item of business is, um, item number ten, which is fourth quarter budget amendments. Do you have any comments on that tonight at all?
It's just cleaning up the end of the, uh, eighteen, nineteen fiscal year budget with some internal budget amendments, clearing up some line items, balancing some line items, there's nothing, nothing of particular note in those amendments, just end of the year cleanup.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Madam Clerk, I am looking for my copy of the, uh, okay, there we go. Okay, uh, next item of business is a, uh, resolution regarding utilization of regional councils of governments for delivery of state services. It says, whereas the city of Hamlet local government entity in North Carolina, whereas the city of Hamlet is a member of the Lumber River Cog, uh, consists of thirty-six local governments in Bladen, Hope, Richmond, Robeson, and Scotland Counties, and whereas there are sixteen regional councils of governments covering all one hundred counties in North Carolina, and whereas regional councils of government were formally established by the state of North Carolina in nineteen sixty-nine to promote regional examination of issues, provide assistance to local governments, and administer specific programs on behalf of the state and federal governments. And whereas in nineteen seventy, by an executive order by the North Carolina governor, designating regions in North Carolina, and in nineteen seventy-one, the state announced its lead regional organization policy that directed state agencies to deal with a single, single regional organization in each designated region of the state for delivery of services in several departments. And whereas the regional councils of government regions best represent the economic centers, travel patterns, cultural ties, and physical commonalities of the state of North Carolina, and whereas the sixteen regional councils of governments, including the Lumber River Council of Government, have proven and trusted relationships with their local communities, local governments, and local elected officials. And whereas the sixteen regional councils of government, including the Lumber River Council of Governments, have an extensive knowledge base and expertise to assist in the delivery of a variety of services, and whereas the state of North Carolina can save taxpayer dollars by utilizing the existing regional councils of government for the delivery of state services instead of the added, additional, instead of adding additional state employees or the creation of new regional entities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hamlet City Council hereby calls on the North Carolina Governor and General Assembly to utilize the current sixteen regional councils of government regions when proposing the designation of any new consolidated regional service boundaries for any state and federal, uh, programs and resources. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Have a second from Mister Stewart? Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Uh, the next item of business is item number eleven A, and at this time, uh, we have, uh, we'll have an opening for the mayor pro tem coming up and wish to make a change at this time. Counsel, what are your wishes on it?
Uh, Mayor, um, just to briefly touch, um, I, I, we've already spoken on tonight, I'll be stepping down, uh, due to a relocation of my job. Uh, but just kind of some business matters I wanted to be sure we took care of before I stepped down and left. And, um, so at this time, I would like to step down as mayor pro tem and mo, uh, make the motion to appoint, uh, Councilman McQueen as mayor pro tem.
Well, second motion. Okay, have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. All right, and Cog rep.
Um, and also, um, being on the board, I sat on the Lumber River Council of Government Board in Lumberton, uh, going to the meetings the third Thursday of every month, uh, representing the city of Hamlet. And I would like to, uh, have Councilman Stewart take over that, uh, capacity. Um, I, I've already stepped down, you know, with them last month, so I would like to make the motion that Councilman Stewart take on that role.
You accept that, Mister Stewart?
Second.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
Section and second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Uh, Mister Stewart has been serving as an alternate all along, and, uh, they feed you well down there when you go to meetings. You just have to go at night's only thing. Uh, all right, the next item of business unfortunately is that, uh, Mister Blanton, or excuse, Mister Blanton's sitting over at that table. I get my, uh, Jonathan's mixed up. Yeah, that's great. Uh, anyway, uh, Mister Bowie will be, uh, resigning at, uh, this time. And, uh, I do have a couple of items for Mister Bowie.
Real quick before, hang, hang tight.
Okay.
One, one more thing, one more thing, yeah, one more thing. Um, before I step down, um, I have spent a lot of time in the city of Hamlet, matter of fact, uh, most of my thirties has been as a council member. And I talked to a, a couple of the board members throughout the week, I've talked to the city manager, and, uh, I want to leave Hamlet in somebody's hands that I feel will step in and do the city justice and not someone that's in it for any kind of political reasons or friendships or whatever. And so before I step down, and this is gonna be up to the board's decision to make when I step down, um, but there's, uh, uh, Joe Robinson who just retired as a mail carrier. My suggestions to council, if they would be willing to take him on, I would love to see him take my spot on council and represent, uh, the city of Hamlet through the rest of my term. Again, that's gonna be up to these folks when I step down.
Okay, um, I have a resolution for you tonight. Whereas Jonathan Bowie has served the community as a member of the Hamlet City Council from December twenty-eleven through June the eleventh of twenty nineteen. And whereas during Jonathan Bowie's eight-year council tenure, he served as a mayor pro tem from twenty thirteen to the present. And he represented the community in numerous capacities, including serving as the city's representative on the Lumber River Council of Governments. And whereas Jonathan Bowie has devoted his time, energy, and talents to this community and provided experience, expertise, passion, and sound judgment on behalf of integ, with integrity, dignity, and thoughtful ref, reflection. And whereas Jonathan Bowie has worked to promote the best interests of the city for the betterment of its economic, social, and aesthetic development. And whereas the city has benefited because of Jonathan Bowie's articulate and passionate commitment to efficient operations. And whereas through the performance of his duties and responsibilities as a member of the city council, Jonathan Bowie has made excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our city. And whereas Jonathan Bowie has earned the admiration of those with whom he has come into contact and the care of his fellow public service. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council for the city of Hamlet does hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks as well as that of our citizens to Jonathan Bowie for his dedicated service to the community this eleventh day of June twenty nineteen. Mayor Bill Davis on behalf of the city council. Mister Bowie, we also have a plaque for you tonight. It's a beautiful plaque, it says, uh, presented with gratitude and appreciation to Mayor Pro Tem Jonathan Bowie in recognition of eight years of serving faithfully on the city, Hamlet City Council following his election in December of twenty eleven. And serving as mayor pro tem twenty thirteen to present. Your knowledge and commitment have been tremendous assets in the city of Hamlet. Presented by the city of Hamlet on June the eleventh, twenty nineteen.
Before I give up my seat, I guess I'll give a quick speech if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Um, I'll try to make it quick. I know we've been here long enough, everybody's ready to go. Um, well, you know, this job has been, oh, man, a roller coaster. It's been fun, it's been, uh, you get stressed sometimes, you, you get frustrated sometimes, uh. But it's, it's, at the end of the day, you know, I look at it, in nineteen eighty, November ninth, nineteen eighty, I was born in Richmond Memorial Hospital in Rockingham. I've lived here my entire life. And I'm fixing to depart from a lot of friends, a lot of family, and it's gonna be hard. Uh, but I never thought that the little hellion sitting in class that didn't know how to shut up, that his teacher put in between two file cabinets, could use that talkative manner to come in and do something good for the city of Hamlet. Never thought that. And I've known Gail for a long time, and I'm sure she sat in church and never thought that one day I would be sitting on city council. And, um, but it's, it's been, it's, it's been amazing. Um, two thousand and four, I came back, I was in Rockingham. And, um, my wife and I got married in oh-one. Uh, everything happened really quick, we got married the weekend after she graduated high school, we had a daughter that year, so there was a lot going on that year, but we made it work. And June second was our eighteenth year anniversary together, being married, and, and she's been here, uh, her family grew up here, but she left in, um, for four years of her life, they live in Columbia, because her dad was transferred with the railroad. And so, she's been here for thirty-two years, and I've been here thirty-eight. Um, and it's, it's a nice place. Oh-four, I came back to Hamlet, coached soccer. Uh, matter of fact, uh, Jesse was the coach. Came in and I was helping Jesse coach, and he said, and I don't want it, I let, it's, it's fun, but I'm gonna let you have it. Uh, so, we took on coaching, and we coached, my wife and I, we coached from oh-four until, I don't know, probably two thousand thirteen or fourteen, um, with the city of Hamlet. And, kinda blame this guy here, he was just kidding one day, he said, man, you oughta, you oughta go and try to run to get on city council. And I said, shit, they'd probably laugh at me. And, um, but sure enough, uh, I ran, first year didn't get elected, I just needed to get my name out there, I went door to door with flyers. Just, and, I don't think there was many doors I missed. And, uh, so I went out, talked to people, I started going to more events. And, and that's what it's all about, it's not just coming up here once a month, sitting at a table and, you know, you make some people mad. It, it, it's not what you wanna do, but it's just part of the job. You, you have to appease and make happy a majority of people, and that's a hard job to do, because I have lost some good friends doing it. Some friends I never thought I would lose, that, uh, but it's just part of the job. And when I step up here, it's business, when I step down, it's not. Any one of these people up here tell you, I'll go toe-to-toe with you up here at this desk, and, and closed sessions, anything else, even at work, even at home. Business is business. When I step down, we can go out to dinner, we can do whatever you want to. But up here, you have to make sure you do your job. And it, it, it's- And it, it's been hard, but man, it's been an experience. It's been one I'll never forget. And I hope that one day when I do decide to retire, which is twenty-one and a half years from now, um, that I can come back and hopefully represent the town I grew up in all over again. And, uh, you know, my wife's told me I can't go and run for anything in Tennessee, but I may. I may. Um, I'm definitely gonna continue to do soccer, not coach, but officiate soccer, 'cause I love doing that. It keeps me kinda slim and a little bit healthy, so I plan on doing that, uh, but I, I do wanna be back involved in community. Like, that's just, I found that it's, it's a lot of excitement and a lot of joy you get out of it. And so I, I want anybody in this room that, don't think you can't, don't think you don't know the right people. You would be surprised if you, if you went out there and you tried, you know, we have a lot of boards. It doesn't have to be city council. It can be, you know, coach. You can coach soccer. You can be on the planning and zoning board, uh, the depot board. There's a lot of things to get involved and make a difference in the town that you live in, 'cause I promise you, it's, it's rewarding. It really is. Um, I've had a lot of people make calls and, and text, and, and they hate to see me go and step down, but it's what I gotta do. And I've gotta do it for my family, so I wanna just thank everyone that put me where I am. Whether you voted or you didn't vote, it, that doesn't matter to me. Some point in, in, in dealing with anyone in the city, it's been, it's been a helpful thing. Um, just whether it's a conversation, um, not necessarily the vote, just a conversation, or something we did good and, and you, you know, applauded the, the board for doing it. Um, I didn't need to leave my name on anything to show I did something. When I look back through, I know what I did here. And I know what I said with this board and what we did and made a difference to the city. Um, the big rock in front of Hamlet Middle School, that one I'll never forget. It took me about three or four months to get that big rock placed in front of Hamlet Middle School that people had their kids' names and birthdays on them all the time. So, things like that, Jonathan Bowie's name is not on it, but I know I helped put it there. And those kids that went through that school year, they know I helped get it there. And it was a lot of help from a lot of people. But thank you all. I'm, I'm gonna stop, 'cause I could go on naming and thanking a lot of people, but I'm gonna stop. I wanna thank these board members, because I know, Maurice, you just came on, uh, but it's, it's been fun. I mean, I'm glad I was here, and, and we chose the right person to sit in that seat, and I don't regret a minute of it. Uh, you guys, I'm, I've been with you the longest, and Eddie came along after that, but you guys, I mean, I, I know we didn't always agree, but that's what it's all about, and I appreciate you guys a lot.
Thank you.
And, and Mayor, thank you. Um, I don't know what you can do without me behind you.
I don't know.
Uh, I'll try to get you a good neighbor. Uh, Jonathan, TC, Gail, Jill, you guys, it's been, it's been awesome. Still gonna see me, so, yeah. Hamlet's still part of my territory, so I will be back, just not as much. Thank you. I'm gonna step down and let you guys have the rest of this meeting. And you get to take this seat.
Appreciate it, bro.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Can I have my name?
You certainly may.
Alright, guys.
You're gonna put that on your desk in Nashville?
Uh, I don't know if they'll let me do that. I've already had to take one off the door, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can go, you get this one now. You all can move however you wanna move from there. I got to have Mayor Pro Tem right here on my right to keep me straight. Uh, at this time, we, I'll entertain any, uh, comments or concerns or whatever as far as, uh, replacement for Mr. Bowie.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I think a motion to accept Mr. Bowie's resignation would be in order.
Alright, I will take a motion at this time to accept Mr. Bowie's resignation. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Now, at this time, we're open to, uh, discussion on replacement.
I don't think I had it on. Um, I agree with, uh, Mr. Bowie. I know he, uh, takes the city of Hamlet at heart. I know he wants the best for the city of Hamlet. Um, I know he wouldn't recommend just anybody to take his place. Uh, he called me, I admit, he called me and asked me about, uh, this fellow. Asked me if I knew Joe Robinson. I told him, well, yeah, I knew Joe. Uh, he was, he's a mailman that just recently retired after about, I don't know, twenty-some years. And, uh, but I see him at my mailbox, I don't know, maybe once or twice a week, maybe sometime, maybe more. And, uh, he's never really talked to me about city council, although he has indicated that about a year ago he wanted to retire from the postal service and that, that one day he, he might, would like to run for city council. But that's about all, the only conversation I've had with him. Uh, he is in the Marine Corps League. I'm, I'm a member of the Marine Corps League, and he's the, uh, the chaplain in the Marine Corps League. Uh, I know, I know he lives in Hamlet, and I know he, he's married, and I know he's got children. I don't know how many. I know he's got grandchildren. I know, uh, he's got some kind of business degree from RCC. I know he's, uh, got other involvement with, uh, hospitals, procurement of materials and things of that nature in Alabama and Texas, and even Hamlet, I think, before they closed out here. I'm not real sure. But, uh, I, I know Joe, and I know that, uh, he's very level-headed, very, v- v- very good. Got good reputation in the community. A lot of people like him. Um, that's, that's basically all I really know. I just think he would, I think he would make a good councilman, to tell you the truth. Anybody else got any comments about him, or?
Jesse, you got any comments?
I, I'll just echo what he said. I, I, I don't know him personally. I know him, talked to him. Um, my thing is, I've never known him to have any political issues, agendas, or anything like that. By the time we meet at the next meeting, the filing to file for the city council will have begun. And I know there's been some talk of some folks that's been interested in appointments and this and that and the other. Wouldn't want to give anybody an unfair advantage at that point. I've never heard anything from him other than he interested in the appointment. Um, I agree with the chief. I, I think it would be a good, a good move.
You have any comments, Mr. Stewart?
Uh, I'll just say, you know, I value, I value John's opinion. Um, but I, I don't, I don't know Mr. Joe at all. I don't know. I, I can't even picture him. Don't even, don't even know who he is, so although I value his opinion, I guess I can't support the appointment of, of, uh, not seeing anything about him on paper or knowing who he is and all that great stuff. And then not giving other ones a chance to, to submit their recommendations on the board. But, you know, I do understand if we make the, the motion and, of course, his votes, uh, the most votes, but although we value your opinion, that's, that's just my, my stance on it.
Well, I don't, uh, I don't think it would be fair for us to wait, because if we waited, um, it would be five months before we actually have somebody to fill this seat. Uh, and if we waited till next month or week or a couple, whatever, we'll be right in the middle of a campaign, uh, season when the people are filing. And it would not be fair to those to take somebody out of that group and put them here.
That file? But you're saying they had filed?
The ones that have filed, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I just don't see it, as, I just don't think it'd be fair to do it, and I don't wanna wait until five months before we have somebody to fill this seat. And, uh, so therefore, um, so many, without any further, unless there's further comments or something.
I'll accept any motions.
Then I would make a motion that we appoint Joe Robinson as the city council member to fill Jonathan's vacancy, uh, effective immediately contingent upon his acceptance.
Second. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Do I have any further comments? Not, I'd ask for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Alright, at this time, we'll have comments from council. I'll start, Mr. Martin.
Well, I could only say what was already been said, basically.
I voted nay.
Nay.
No, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
What, what, what's that? I didn't.
Now, go ahead with your comments.
Oh, um, well, uh, what's, what's been said has already been said, and I just wanna say that, uh, and reiterate what everybody said, thought about. I'm sorry to see Mr. Bowie leave. He's, he's served the city well, and I've enjoyed working with him on the council. I think he's brought a lot to this council, probably more than, um, maybe he's even given credit for. But he, he's a very valuable member of this council, and I hate to see him go, but, 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 uh, we'll move forward and we'll, we'll move on and do alright. Uh, other than that, I don't really have anything else to say, uh. Now, the motion we've made in the second, wh- where we stand on that.
He's a board member.
Well, I just wanna make sure that means.
Two to one.
Okay, alright.
Okay. Are you good now?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Stewart?
Uh, thank the staff here. Can't thank you all enough. Every single meeting, every time I call, city hall, anything needed, thank you so very much. Uh, Jonathan Bowie, you're the man. You're the, you're the real MVP. You, you stuck by me. I appreciate you. I'll be calling you continuously. Uh, one thing that I'll say to the citizens, I cannot thank you enough for coming to the meetings. While we, while we are public, I encourage each and every citizen of Hamlet, North Carolina, to please, please, please come to these meetings. You know, we make these decisions and we make them for the good of the citizens. And, you know, we don't, we, we hate when we're out walking the streets and we hear the complaints and we hear the things and but you're not at the meetings, so please, 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 I encourage. You know, I hear people, you know, we need a pole light on my auntie's street and, 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 and some, some steps and the streets are not good and all that great stuff. Bring that stuff to the meetings. Let us know. You know, let us know about ordinances and, and different things like that. That's the only way that we're gonna get these things done and, and get it done to your liking. Of course, everybody feels like their problem is, is the number one problem, so come to the meetings. Thank my council members. Mayor, always on my side. I appreciate everything.
Mr. McQueen, mayor pro tem.
Jonathan, I appreciate all you've done. Um, I can remember the phone call well, whenever we had that first discussion. I could tell you where I was at, and I could tell you what you said. And, uh, I've served with a lot of people on the board, but I don't think I've ever served with anyone as passionate as you. And it didn't make headlines a lot, but we butted heads the right good bit, and we're both hard-headed. Um, thank you for your service. Gonna miss you and wish you well.
Say it.
Okay.
Mr. Bowie, I'm gonna miss you. It's been good. Uh, now, Mr. McQueen's gonna have to learn to keep me straight over here. And I do, I'd, as the saying goes, we wish you Godspeed, and Nashville is a nice place. We've visited there, and it's a very nice place. Um, I do want to go on the record on one thing here. Of course, the mayor doesn't have a vote, but again, this was a bit sudden. Have no problem with Joe at all, and in all due respect to my fellow councilmen, I don't believe I would've gone in, in this direction with it. But, uh, again, like I say, I, I defer to them, but I did wanna get it on the record that I felt like maybe we could've done a little different. Um, the other thing is, is we've got a new display down at Tornado Building that everyone needs to go down and look at if you haven't seen it. They put two thousand hours of work into it to build it, and it's just beautiful. So you get a chance, go down there and look at it. Uh, I also have a couple of other things. I have a, uh, statement of support for the Garden Reserve. Last week, uh, we had some people from the employer's support of the Garden Reserve, the E S G R, that came down and met with Calvin White. And one of our, uh, members over there, a full-time employee, is in the National Guard. And they gave him a real nice certificate because of his support for the National Guard. Well, also, we got one for the city of Hamlet. Says, "We recognize the Garden Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and well-being of our communities. In the highest American tradition, the patriotic men and women of the Garden Reserve serve voluntarily in an honorable and vital profession. They train to respond to their community and their country in time of need. They deserve the support of every segment of our society. If these voluntary forces are to continue to serve our nation, increased public understanding is required of the essential role of the Garden Reserve in preserving our national security. Therefore, we join other employers in pledging that the city of Hamlet fully recognizes, honors, and complies with Uniformed Services Employment, Reemployment Act, that we will provide our managers and supervisors with the tools they need to effectively manage those employees who serve in the Garden Reserve, that we appreciate the values, leadership, and unique skills service members bring to our workforce, and will encourage opportunities to employ guardsmen, reservists, transitioning service members and veterans. We will continually recognize and support our country's service members and their families in peace, in crisis, and in war. And we're certainly pleased to be able to support the National Guard and Reserves." Now, I have a very pleasant, uh, mayor proclamation tonight, and, uh, this is for business, uh, Mildred Emma Teal Jones. And she has, uh, turned one hundred years old. And, uh, I would encourage anyone who knows of any citizens that we're having that turn one hundred years old to please let us know at city hall so we can do a proclamation for them. And I believe tonight that we have, uh, Ms. Jones' granddaughter. Is that correct? Would you come up to the microphone, please, ma'am? And you are, state your name.
Melanie Richardson.
And thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Mildred Emma Teal Jones of one oh five Campbell Avenue in Hamlet is blessed to celebrate her twen- one-hundredth birthday on June the twentieth of twenty nineteen. And whereas Mildred Emma Teal Jones was born in Morven, North Carolina on June the twentieth of nineteen nineteen, where she lived and was educated and graduated with honors. And whereas Mildred Emma Teal Jones moved to Hamlet in nineteen forty and was employed with the Seaboard Coastline Railroad as a mayor, uh, excuse me, as a maid, as a seamstress for a lingerie factory, and as a head cook for a restaurant in Hamlet, North Carolina. Whereas Mildred Emma Teal Jones was married to the late Thomas Jones Junior, who was a native of Hamlet, and they are the proud parents of seven children, nineteen grandchildren, twenty-one great-grandchildren, and six great-great-grandchildren. And whereas Mildred Emma Teal Jones became a homemaker and opened a small business that cons- uh, consisted of sewing, cooking, designing, making hats, pocketbooks, and sashes for the people of Hamlet, North Carolina. That sounds like more than a small business. Whereas Mildred Emma Teal Jones was an active member of the N double A C P and the Railroad Workers' Wives. And whereas Mildred Emma Teal Jones has been actively registered to vote since May seventeenth of nineteen fifty-eight and has never missed her opportunity to vote. And whereas she volunteered for years to help register people to vote and volunteered at the Capitol Highway School. And whereas Mildred Emma Jones, Teal Jones, served on the deaconess board, was a Sunday school teacher, provided secretary on financial work, and sang on the choir at Saint Stephen's A M E Zion Church in Hamlet, North Carolina for over fifty years. And now serves as the deaconess and missionary boards at Providence Missionary Baptist Church in Rockingham, North Carolina. And whereas Mildred Emma Teal Jones has resided in Hamlet, North Carolina for over seventy-nine years and is the historian and matriarch of the Jones family. Now therefore, I, Bill Bayless, mayor of Hamlet, North Carolina, do urge all citizens to pay tribute to this special member of our community, Mildred Emma Teal Jones, on her one-hundredth birthday, June the twentieth of twenty nineteen. I'm going to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to prolong the meeting, but if I may, can we go back to the city manager's report?
We sure can.
No problem. No.
Go ahead.
There are just several items I wanna bring to council and the public's attention tonight. Uh, first, Mrs. Richardson, I wanna congratulate, uh, your grandmother, and I certainly appreciate you being here on her behalf tonight. We were very, very pleased when Councilman Stewart brought this to our attention, and we are very glad to do that, uh, for you. Also, uh, Councilman from, uh, Ellery Jeremy's here with us tonight, glad to have you, always welcome and always good to see you. As a few items of particular interest, the city of Hamlet will be having our Fourth of July celebration on July the fourth. It is going to start at two P M. downtown, we're gonna have lots of food, music, a really good time, and of course, a very large fireworks show as we always do every year, so I certainly invite the public and everyone to come out to, uh, to celebrate our nation's Independence Day on the fourth. The Fourth of July falls on a Thursday this year, so residential garbage pickup will be, when Billy, Wednesday or Friday? We're gonna do it Friday, so if you typically get your garbage picked up on Thursday, it will be picked up on Friday this year, it'll just sit there one extra day. Uh, also, I just wanna, uh, thank Mr. Bowie for his years of service, as all of you have. I, I can honestly say we've been hundreds of miles from Raleigh to Wilmington to the cog, and I've, I've certainly learned a lot, and he has been a, a great friend and a great help to me. We had, uh, accomplished many things, I remember when I first got here, probably within the first few months, it was two, three in the morning, and the alarm was going off at the library, and Jonathan and I were here at the police department scrambling to try to find a key to get it to turn off, so he has been there every step of the way, no one more visible, no one more supportive, and I will, I will certainly miss you, and will cer- and certainly do wish you well, and... And the hurricane, absolutely, the hurricanes and the hundreds of miles that we traveled on city streets, taking care of everything then, so thank you for everything, Jonathan, and I, I certainly, certainly will, uh, miss you and appreciate your support of the city. Uh, lastly, I just wanna officially say that, uh, I am honored, privileged, and absolutely humbled by the faith that the council expressed in me over the weekend. They offered me a, uh, a chance to return as city manager. I have accepted that offer in effective July one, I will be back full-time. I can't tell you how appreciative I am of the faith that you all have invested in me. Uh, as I've been working the past few weeks, I've been talking with people in, in, in my office, and they would ask about Hamlet, and I would start telling one story or the other, and they would say, "You really light up when you talk about Hamlet, you seem to have really enjoyed being city manager." And I said, "I did," and that was, that was a huge part when I, I returned. It's been difficult times that we've experienced over the past few years, there've been many heartwarming times, and many valuable relationships that I've, uh, made with this council, with previous councils, certainly with all of you, with, uh, your families, you've all welcomed me in from the mayor and his wife. Everyone ha- could not have been any kinder, warmer, and welcoming, and there's no place else that I would be, uh, be rather returning than to Hamlet, so I'm looking forward to working with you all, and, uh, my wife is here tonight, and I wanna thank her for allowing me to come back to y'all, if you will. No, she's been very supportive of this decision, and we're both very glad to have me back here in Hamlet. Also, lastly, soccer registration, we'll go through, kind of on a down note. June third through thirteen, uh, nineteenth are the regular dates for soccer registration. Four to six years old, seven to nine, and ten to thirteen, and then late registration will run July twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. And those forms are available here at city hall, if anyone's in- interested in coming out, playing soccer, or volunteering to coach, we're always glad to have as much participation as we can, and encourage our citizens to come out and support, support our younger generation as they, as they embark on their parks and rec, uh, endeavors. That is all I have, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and I'll just, I'll just finish up with saying that this council over the last several years, we've had a lot of ups and downs, uh, we have managed and worked hard, and we have managed to work things out and come together, and doing the best we can for the city of Hamlet. The, um, budget is in excellent shape, we graciously appreciate our staff that has worked so hard on that. And, uh, I have just really enjoyed working with, uh, Mr. Blanton, he has, uh, just been great to work with, he's very responsive to the citizens. Uh, you pick the phone up and say, "Look, so-and-so's got a problem," he, "I'll go look at it." And, uh, as with Mr. Bowie, uh, we just go down to city hall, pick him up, and have, and, uh, utilities director, and we go look at it. And, uh, that's, you know, that's graciously appreciated, he always has an open door, and, uh, we were really pleased to be able to, uh, have him continue in employment. We've had a good work, excellent working relationship with the borough law firm, Mr. Morpheus, and, uh, we graciously appreciate you bringing, updating all these ordinances that are so far from back in the dark ages, the horses and buggies, I guess. We're still fighting the battle with, uh, water and sewer, and that's something that we will continue to do, we'll continue looking at it. Uh, I've seen several holes being dug in the streets this past week, and, uh, it just seems like, uh, you fix one thing, two more pop up. But, uh, again, I appreciate the work that the city council does, they do a fantastic job, we've, uh, got everything lined up. I do hate it when we lose a member in the midterm, and, uh, it's always tough, but we'll work through it and do the best we can for you. Got a problem, you can call me on the telephone, or you can call city hall. I'm, I'm always open twenty-four hours a day, I don't care, but, uh, that's great. Uh, does anyone else have any other comment they wanted to make? If not, uh, okay. In that case, uh, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise, thank you.